...the Board of Education will now come forward. I would like to ask our newly elected, one of our newly elected trustees, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna kind of break from our regular, traditional, normal way of doing things. We're gonna swear in our newly elected officers so that now we'll have a podium panel for itself. If I could ask you a few steps to the podium. And if you two proceed, raise your hand. And after that, I extend my hand to the class of eyes.
Yeah, I'm sure that's...
Okay, yours. I'm going to swear. I'm going to swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of member of Board of Education.
Of the office of member of Board of Education.
Of the office of member of Board of Education. Of Southfield Public Schools, Southfield, Michigan.
Southfield Public Schools, Southfield, Michigan.
Of Southfield Public Schools, Southfield, Michigan. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Darryl Buchanan, and I'm president of the board.
My name is Reyes Williams, vice president of the board.
Yolanda Smith.
Secretary for the board.
Secretary for the board.
Cornet Cass, trustee.
Lieutenant Wu is trustee.
And Debbie Trampf, deputy superintendent for the Department of Services, and I'm sitting in tonight for our team superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, who is tonight representing Southfield Public Schools and the state of Michigan as one of the four finalists for National Superintendent of the Year. Wonderful, and it's wonderful to hear and to know that our superintendent is in DC, and she's doing a wonderful job. I am Lenu Bo, the social superintendent of instruction.
Happy New Year to all. Happy holidays from Eastern Experience.
I am David Turner, social superintendent for Human Resources in the Midwest.
Okay, and keeping record of our meeting tonight is Mr. Christian, and in the back on video, we have Chuck Capsis, and on audio tonight, we have Ethan White. As Mrs. Trent said, the superintendent is in Washington DC as one of the four finalists competing for superintendent of the year for the entire country. As far as this board is concerned, we've already won. To have our superintendent be one of the recognized as one of the four finalists is an awesome, awesome thing, and we couldn't be prouder. So, we're wishing her luck. Prayers going up tonight, everybody, let's see if we can make this happen for us. We'll get some right to our student and staff recognition. And first, we have Ms. Martha Ritchie from our purchasing and food service department. She's our manager, and she has received certification for a Michigan Class A underground storage tank system.
How would you help?
And if you hear that Martha is dealing, that sounds like she's dealing dirt or something. I don't know. I just totally envision that, but please, go to the podium.
We have an underground storage tank that costs $10,000 a gas vehicle, and that EPA has a new rule, has a new rule that every underground storage tank gets to have its Class A, Class B operator. We researched this and found that the amount to complete the service at other districts has definitely cost $6,000 a year. So, we decided to do an in-house, and I became Class B operator, and got mail around here in Class C. So, we are all set with EPA and today it's $6,000.
All right. I just want to say that she really just took it upon herself to do that, and it was quite a bit of studying and testing that she had to do to get them to save the district some money, so we really appreciate it.
So, you know how to operate a backhoe?
Yeah.
Or anything?
I know the rules so that we don't have a strong skill in person, but...
Okay, all right.
But we thank you for your effort. Lot of work. This might be a novice question, but what are we storing? Is it natural gas?
We're storing people's gas for the buses and our gas vehicles. We used, years ago, we had a gas underground storage tank. We closed that, and now our gas vehicles go to the gas station across the street, which is more get out of the way.
All right, thank you. We welcome right to our report of our student representatives. So, first up, we have Ms. Pierre Terrence from Southfield High.
Good evening. I just first off, I'd like to wish, or hope everyone had a happy, wonderful holiday. Happy New Year to everyone. It's now 2013, and we are only five months away from graduation. So, first off, I would just like to say that the Southfield Student Congress, with the help of our staff, student body, and community members, we were able to raise, I mean, we were able to collect a little over 3,000 cans for our can food drive, and with those cans, we were able to provide 25 Southfield High families with holiday food baskets. And we still have enough cans left over to hopefully provide those same families with holiday food baskets during the Easter season. The Southfield High Scholars Plus, with their movie day fundraiser, we were able to raise enough money to provide each family with $20 gift certificates to complement their food baskets. And we still had enough money left over to provide families that did not get food gift baskets with a gift certificate. The Southfield J is preparing to come out with their third issue, so look forward to seeing that. And the varsity boys' basketball team remains undefeated, so come out and support them at their next away game this Thursday against Troy High School at 7:00, or their next home game against North Farmington High School at 4:00, which will be held right at Southfield High. And lastly, tomorrow is the big day. We have a test day at Southfield High School for the underclassmen. Sophomores and juniors will be able to take the ACT. Well, it's a prep ACT, and this is really critical for the juniors who will be taking the official ACT in March, so they'll be able to see where they're at and what they need to study more for before they take the official. And then the seniors have the opportunity of going on the college tour tomorrow, just because we wanted to give them the full effect of taking the ACT, so seniors have the option of taking the college tour of either Michigan State, Eastern Michigan, or Open University. That's all.
And you brought up the success of the Southfield Blue Jays. I have to recognize, one of the Blue Jays moms is sitting here in the audience with us, Mrs. Butler. If you could just please stand and wave towards her son, Darnell, the student at University High, and he's starting forward over there, and he's a pretty good player. I do thank him, I think. All right, next up, we have Mr. Blair Moore from Southfield Laiterp.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to you all.
Good evening.
Let's start with a brief recap of December, beginning with the amazing band in Orchard Winter Concert on the 17th, as well as the PTA meeting. Later down the road, Laiterp enjoyed wonderful entertainment from the Fine Arts Festival on the 20th. Now, moving on to some recent activities taking place earlier today, student Nicole Banks received her acceptance letter from the University of Pennsylvania. This marks the fifth straight year that Laiterp has had a student accepted into an Ivy League school. In addition to Ivy League business, Laiterp had a recruiter from Harvard University visit and speak about the amazing opportunities and environment that Harvard offers. This week, however, is also about hard work, as Ivy students have and will take their Ivy Exam, better known as the IOCs, where Ivy English students are orally tested on the material covered within the first semester. The National Honor Society will be having their membership meeting this Saturday, January 12th, at the Civic Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And beginning next week, January 15th through the 17th, Laiterp students will start their midsemester exams. At the end of the week, on the 18th, the students can relax at the annual blackout dance held by Student Congress. And the extravagant Doctor Team Task Force Freedom Walk will be held January 21st, where students from all Southfield Public Schools will be present for this memorable event. And for sports, the ladies hoop squad is currently 7-0, as they go head-to-head with Avondale today at 7:00. And the men's basketball team record stands at 2-7. Thank you.
Hopefully, things will start to turn around with the men.
And a shout-out to the ladies.
Absolutely, congratulations. Next, we have Abby Parker from University High School Cabinet.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. So, I just wanted to make a quick note that I do have a short report today, as this month we'd like to encourage our students to devote most of their time towards our final week, which starts next week, and to pretty much prepare for the new semester. So, I know I touched upon this at the last meeting. Our NHS had their induction ceremony, but I have the numbers, and they inducted a total of 22 new members to NHS. So, January 17th, Student Congress will be hosting their Zazzon event, and it's pretty much our fun day where we let our students to, you know, relax and relieve all their stress from finals and just, you know, prepare for the upcoming new semester. And as Blair pointed out, UHSA will also be attending the MLK Walk, which is on the 21st, and we anticipate that majority of all of our student leaders will be participating in this walk.
Okay, we'll now turn the meeting over for the reporter, the superintendent, and Mr. Trent.
Hey, I'm Laura Spears here tonight. She's the director of Students. She's here with Mr. Ziad Hamel. He's the president of the... Did I pronounce that correctly? Is this good? I can't...
Mahaba. Good evening.
To the board, cabinet, and faculty. Do I have a treat for you today? I am so proud to introduce you and most of you, for most of your introduction. Do you know him? Okay. Two years ago, this young man enrolled in Southfield Schools. He came to us as English limited speaking. He also came to us as visually impaired. He enrolled at Southfield Laiterp for two years, and we just about had to kick him out. And my hats off to the staff at Southfield Laiterp, because they did a remarkable job, not only the ESL staff, but also the staff of special education. So, we had two phones. When I asked Ziad what he wanted to see when he graduated, no, I let him tell. So, ladies and gentlemen, Ziad Hamel.
Hi, Ziad, gentlemen. My name is Ziad Hamel. I am from Iraq. I come to the United States in 2008, when I was 17 years old. I am not speaking English. By now, I'm speaking English very well, and my country don't have education for visually impaired people or blind people. I, in America, I run the Braille. I run mobility, and I learned how to use travel, transportation, and this stuff. And I know how to use the Amani, and I count the money. I show you some money. Do you know that this is 20, this is 5, or this is a dollar? This is $20. And this is a dollar. This is a $5.
Show him how, show him how you fold it.
I fold it this and this. This is $5.
Yeah, that's all right. Thank you, Tom.
This is a dollar. I fold it this way. I know this is $20.
Can I get a loan?
And well, I have, this is my Braille watch. I know, I touch it all the time, and I know what time it is.
He is currently a student in our post-secondary program, New Horizon. His teacher is Ron Watson, and I would like to take my hand off to not only Ron Watson, also the staff at New Horizon. I was looking for Dennis Misha, who is the manager of New Horizon, so I would like to say thank you for the people at New Horizon for making accommodations for you. Now, tell them what you would like to become.
I like to become a Braille teacher and mobility teacher. I need to finish a college.
That's excellent.
I'd like to introduce to you his teacher at New Horizon.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I would just like to say a couple of things about Ziad. Ziad is our first visually impaired student at the Nextel Program, and seeing him every on a day-to-day basis, he has just overcome so many obstacles, and he's been, we've been so impressed with all of his, all of the things he's able to do now, like just walking around, walking around the facility. He does, he needs minimal assistance, and he's able to do some of the things, and we always ask questions, like whenever he sees a young lady, or whenever he knows a young lady's getting ready to come, he'll open the door. And we said, "What, Ziad, how do you know?" He said, "I can just hear, I just know." And so, we said, "He just overcomes so many challenges," and we're so impressed with everything that he's just done over there. And we have a partnership with Commission for the Blind, as well as Open Schools, and so we work with them on a weekly basis, and we follow reports. And I'm happy to report that on January, what's the date, the 7th? No, 8th, January 8th, 2013, that Ziad has met all of his goals for mobility, as well as his Braille goals have been met. So, I think he deserves a hand for that. And so, for someone who has not had the access to formal education, I think it's a great reminder to us all how much we should not take for granted our education and the access that we do have, and I'm just so impressed, and I'm very thankful to have had the experience to be a teacher to someone like Ziad Hamel. Thank you.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you for coming.
His family's all over here.
We have family fans.
Family.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to prove that Southfield Public Schools meets all challenges. I mean, I was actually here the day that Ziad enrolled in Southfield Public Schools, and we were just in the back shaking our heads, like, "What are we gonna do? How do we, how are we gonna do this?" But under the leadership of our superintendent, she said, "We take all challenges, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. He's here, and we're gonna deal with this." And that's why, you know, that's why we do what we do, but that's why we have the superintendent of the year, because she figured it out. And it's really an honor to have had the success with you, and we wish you all the best in the future, Ziad. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to introduce Mr. Frank Surrati. He's the executive director from ParentLink, which is the new auto notification system that we're looking at to replace our Honeywell.
I'm working with an iPad. This is where it's, this is where it is. Let me make sure that we can get the signal, I think we were having a little bit of a problem with before. And I hope you don't, oh, good, okay, thank you. It's a privilege to be here. Can you hear me? Is this on?
No, but we can hear you.
There, we're good? Okay. I'm very pleased to be here to talk about ParentLink. I would like to take a little detour and just give my two cents about Wanda Cook Robinson, who I've known for a number of years, and I have a soft spot in my heart for her. I hope that she is the one, but as you've said before, even if she's not, she is a big success in all of our eyes. And my, my little anecdote is that I go to a lot of national superintendent conferences, and Wanda is somebody that other superintendents gravitate toward. She has a big-time influence on other superintendents around the country, and she makes a big difference at those conferences, so I hope she wins. So, what I'm here to talk to you about, I'm gonna take 10 minutes, I suppose that's what I have. So, ParentLink is replacing the current school-to-home notification system you have. That's a basic part of ParentLink, but there's much more to it, and I'll quickly tell you that now you can have e-newsletters for all your schools. You can do all kinds of extensive surveying, and you have these mobile apps. Mobile apps are taking the communication of our school districts into a completely different route. So, I want to just give you a, just a couple of minutes, just a taste of what these things do. So, we have a mobile app for the community, we have one for parents, and we have one for administrators. And I have a couple of demos up here, and you know, this looks like all of our phones. And by the way, these mobile apps work across all smartphones. As part of the contract that you signed, anybody in the community, parents or otherwise, in fact, anybody in the world, can download these apps, so that you can be in touch with people all over the country. That being said, I'm gonna click on this one in the upper left-hand corner. This is Westdale City Schools in New York, and essentially what you're looking at, and what you will be looking at in about a month here, is your website for Southfield Public Schools on a mobile app. So, when you speak to people in your community, you can say to them, "Hey, you don't have to go to our website anymore to get information. All you need to do is go to the Apple Store, download the app, and you are connected." And I'll give you a quick tour of this. I'm gonna click on News. So, anything that you post to Facebook and Twitter or other social media is here. If you click on Story, it comes up, and you can read it. I'm just flipping through the different stories right here. I'm gonna go back out. Obviously, we want to know how all our sports teams are doing, so if you click on Sports, if I click on Sports, there we go, you'll get the stories. These can have embedded video, so in the case of the swimming guys, if they're swimming, and people open it up, they can see the rates going on. However you currently post it, we grab it and we put it on, on this app. Another thing is calendars. Calendars turn out to be a really important part of this app. If you're a parent or a community member, and you have multiple kids in the school or just one kid, you now don't have to go to every website to get their schedule. So, for example, here, on the upper right-hand corner, I'm gonna click on that little gear, and I want to say, "I want information about my kid or news from any of these schools, and I will see it on my calendar." So, let me go back out. Oh, I should've chosen something. Sorry about that. I'm always, even though I work for a technology company, I'm not a very good technology person. Okay. So, if we go back out, so here's my calendar. I open up the app, and I say, "Well, okay, let me click on this." Ah-ha, as I'm an administrator, I have this on my calendar or on my app, and you'll notice if I add to my, click Add to my Calendar, I can have that information now on my personal calendar, and I never have to go find it again. Okay, I'm gonna back out of this again, and, oh, sorry, I didn't want you guys to see that yet. I wanted to make a big splash. Hold on. I'm gonna log out. I'm back here. You'll notice in the center here, there's a tip line. Obviously, we have a lot of issues that we all deal with on a day-to-day basis, anything from a broken window to unfortunately, very, a lot more serious stuff. But if somebody wants to give you a tip, they click on the tip line. It says, "If it's an emergency, call 911." You can then type in right here whatever you want to type in and create your tip to send it. Now, you can take the additional step, you see the camera in the bottom right-hand corner? You can click on that, and you can take a photo. So, if there's an incident somewhere, or whatever it is, you can capture it in a photo, and the benefit of that is, not only do you bring more clarity to the tip, we GPS that, and now you know exactly where it is. The, you'll notice categories here. You can create, and the district will create, the kinds of categories that these incidences bring, are referred to. So, if I click on Categories, you will create your own. So, if it's a safety issue, it might have to go to three people. If it's just a maintenance issue, it might just go to one person. Lastly, oh, second to last, you can choose the school or wherever it happens to be. You'll notice here, let me turn this off, that Anonymous is on, meaning the person that's giving the tip, it wants to be Anonymous. However, if they don't want to be Anonymous, they turn that to Off, and they can give you their information. So, I'm gonna skip over a bunch of things here, and I'm gonna click on A Parent. So, what you've just seen is what a community person can do. If you're a parent, you can do all of that. However, as a parent, you can now log in, and everything you do at a parent portal, you can now do on your phone or your smartphone. So, I'm gonna log in. There we go. Now, I'm automatically Cliff Huxtable. And so, you'll notice pictures here. We're gonna import whatever pictures you have. We will instruct people to take their own pictures and put them here, and a very significant thing has happened since these mobile apps have been developed, and that is, if I click on Cliff, just because Cliff decided to download this mobile app, he is more apt to update his information. this mobile app, he is more apt to update his information. So in the upper right-hand corner, you can click Edit, and you can update the information. So I know districts struggle like crazy to get proper information, more email addresses, whatever it might be. Now, that's done by the user. So I'll just take you one more place for this. I'm gonna click on Theo. I'm a parent, I wanna see how my kid is doing in school. You'll notice at the bottom, there's a cafeteria balance. I'm a parent, and I'm waiting in line for something. I can click on that and say, "You know what? I'm just gonna pay it right now." If I wanna look at his classes, I'll click on Classes. These are his grades. If I click on World History to see how he's doing there, guess what? I see the teacher. So often, we don't know our kids' teachers. Now you have a picture to associate with the class. If you have any reason at all to be in touch with the teacher, the upper right-hand corner, you can click, and you can send an email to that teacher. Delete that. So you could go in and look at Assignments, for example, if I can get the demo to work. Well, anyway, you can click on Assignments, and you can see what's upcoming, what's past due. And you're more involved just by the sheer fact that you have the app. Let's see. And you'll see notifications in the upper left-hand corner. Typically, now when you send calls and emails informing your parents of things, it goes on their answering machine. Now it can go immediately, instantaneously, right on the app. And that includes email, surveys, anything you want your parents to see. The last thing I wanna show you is what we call the Administrator App. So all of your administrators are walking around with this on their phone. Typically, in order for them to get information out, whether it's an emergency or whatever it happens to be, they have to get in front of their computer, they have to go online to whatever they used, you have been using in the past to send messages, and do the business of organizing it and getting it out. Now, this is all they have to do. They click on New Message. They title the message. Just say it's a test. Then they choose who it's gonna go to. I don't think my iPad likes to be set down like this. I guess that's an issue. See, it's really fast. Let me do one other thing. So then they choose who it's gonna go to. Let's say you're the superintendent. You wanna contact your whole staff. You hit Staff, and you'll see you magically have 107 people you're sending it to. You hit Phone. You hit Start Recording. Blah, 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 blah. You speak your message. You're done. And now you can go back out and send your message. That's how quickly it can happen. And obviously, in an emergency, that's a big deal. You can do email, you can do texting, and most messages go out at a certain time, but if it's an emergency, you can say, "Send it now." The last feature I wanna show you is the Mobile Directory. Click on the Mobile Directory. Maybe I can set this down now. You can search, I don't know if you can see that at the bottom, but you can search. You can have your favorites. So let's say, "These are my favorites." Or I have a group. I wanna send it to everybody on my office staff. You can do that. But on the right, at the bottom, we can click Search. Every administrator now has the ability to search for anybody associated with your school district. In this case, I just wanna give you the example of an administrator searching for a student. I always like to use the example of an administrator walking on campus, perhaps seeing somebody out of place. And they say, "What is your name?" to the student. And they say, "I'm Teresa Christensen." Pull it up. Click. And now you will see a picture of Teresa. So you're putting a picture to the name, and you know you've got the right kid. Then you can say, "Well, Teresa, I see this is your information. I know how to contact you, but you know what? Why aren't you in class?" Let me click on this. "Ah, looks like you should be in Biology." "Yes, indeed." "Let's look at your attendance here." "Oh, I see you like to be tardy for this class." So the point is, is that you can get as granular as you want and have it all in the palm of your hand. So this is sort of the 50,000-foot view of this. There's a lot more that you're gonna learn as the weeks and days go by of using this service. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. But Wanda thought that it would be a good idea to just give you a flavor of what direction the district is going in.
How secure is this, when you have this app for the administrators?
It's password-protected. There's no way that anybody can get into it unless you log in, like you log into anything. We will work with the district to use either current credentials that people have or create others. You can authenticate, not just with a password, but you can authenticate with passwords that you have, say for Facebook or Twitter. So there's just a lot of ways, or a lot of levels of security to this.
Is there a FIFA downloading app?
I'm sorry?
Is there a FIFA downloading app?
Oh, very good question. No. Anybody in the community, all parents, all they do is go to the store, look for Southfield Public Schools, hit the button, download it, and ready to go.
Through the App Store.
Yeah, right. The App Store. Right.
So now, if so secure that students will not be even going to change their grade, correct?
Yeah, right. They couldn't do that. Yeah. As a matter of fact, when, this is another security point that we have learned over time, that if somebody goes in there as a parent and changes information, such as giving you a new phone number or address or whatever it might be, that actually doesn't change. It's reported to you, and then you, whether it's at the school level or at the district level, can confirm that's the change that needs to be made. And then it'll be made. We don't want the, you know, people to go into your student information system and just do whatever they wanna do.
Is it possible to put either barcoding or QR on the IDs to be scanned to bring up the information? Probably a little more than that.
You're ahead of the game. That's the next iteration of this. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to serving the district.
That's the end of the Superintendent's Report, and my Finance Report is contained in the Consent Agenda. So I will pass it along to you after this.
Good evening again. And this evening, I do not have a report, so I will continue on and pass the Council's vote.
What she said. For the short day, I have no meeting. I'm contained in the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
I love leaving like this. We have a report from the Hudson Center.
For the Trisfecta, there is also no report.
Pitt Stark Policy Council will meet next Monday on January the 14th, 9:30.
The calendar said 9:30. If I missed it, I would appreciate it. Okay. Thank you.
We'll go find out.
All right. And hopefully, this new application will sort that all out. Okay. We have no unfinished business, so we go right to our action items. I will take a motion to open and approve the Consent Agenda.
Move the opening Consent Agenda.
Move and supported. Are there any questions in regard to the Consent Agenda? Okay. Secretary, please call for the vote.
Hudson Robinson? Hudson Lewis?
Yes.
Vice President Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Hudson Katz?
Yes.
Senator Cannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And just like that, we just paid our bill, $83 million. Take a motion to open and approve Report 5129, the U.S. Factilite Plate. The signature plate that we have to have for all signatures from the treasurer. And so we have to get a new plate made. And of course, we have to vote on that. So that's the purpose of this vote. The Secretary, please call for the vote.
Myself, yes. Hudson Lewis?
Yes.
Hudson Katz?
Yes.
Treasurer Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Treasurer Williams?
Yes.
Senator Cannon?
Yes.
Senator.
Take a motion to open and approve Report 5130, the MIADA Officer and ASRAK. Support. Move and supported. Are there any discussions?
Kenny Nutt? Just so the community is aware, both of our comprehensive high schools have MIADA officers that are employees of both the City of Southfield as well as Southfield Public Schools. And they serve in that capacity in the building for security purposes. And ASRAK was a building that did not have a security officer. And we decided that it might be in everybody's best interest to have one in that facility. And so we're now approving the motion to have that officer added to Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
So this is for background too, something prior to the new town tragedy. This was a major.
Absolutely. Absolutely. There is always, you know, being, it's such tragedy that occurs, but it just kinda heightens your awareness that, you know, these are the things of the times that we live in. So, okay, Mr. Secretary, would you please call for the vote?
Hudson Katz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Hudson Lewis?
Yes.
Treasurer Williams?
Yes.
Treasurer Robinson?
Yes.
Senator Cannon?
Yes.
Okay. We have the Report 5131, which is a purchasing report. These are items that are purchased that do not meet the threshold for board approval. And they are contained in the agenda. So if you really don't have anything to do tonight, you can read that one. Boy, yourself to that. We also have Report 5132, Gifts to the Board. The following companies provided financial sponsorships to the Southfield Regional Academic Campus and Levy Middle School for students who attended the Fall Region Four National Society of Black Engineers Conference held in Chicago in November of 2012. BFF Corporation donated $3,000. Plank Moran, CRAESA, donated $600. And Member Driven Technologies donated $300. So we would like to thank them all for their contribution. And we've already had the report on the auto notification system. All right. And now we come to the portion of the meeting for public participation. I do want to make it clear that the board recently adopted an amended policy on public participation. Only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of a meeting. And we do ask that anybody that intends to address the board, please fill out a green card. Do we have any? Okay. Okay. But you know what? For, you step to the microphone. We'll get it. I can verify.
You can verify?
Yeah, I can verify. She isn't here. If you'd just please state your name and your address for the record. Comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked, not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Margaret Pubbler. My address is 2020 Wild Turn, Southfield, Michigan, Fort Hills, Tennessee. Actually, I'm here today for the Marching Band, the Southfield Marching Band, where everybody knows that Mr. Miller, who is the band director, he is retiring this year. And the reason why, you know, I have one of my other board, oh, or two of my board members here, as far as we need to, just kinda need some guidance, you know, 'cause right now, Mr. Miller has been the band director for over, you know, 20 years. And with him retiring, it's gonna leave a void for the marching band. The band in Southfield, which is the best thing passed. I don't know if everybody has heard, the marching band, but they are very, very good. And we really would hate to lose that void where we don't have a band director. So we're hoping that the board will not just wait until June, but maybe try to escalate it a little bit to put a person in place for Mr. Miller. Because during, well, we have pre-drills, we have all the things that we actually do before the end of the year season. Right now, we're getting ready to promote the freshmen, all new freshmen, to come in on January 24th, and which means we get quite a few banners. We get like maybe 50 new freshmen that come in each and every year. So we wanna make sure that we keep the band as first in class. So that's why I'm kinda here today, just to make sure that if we can, try to escalate it a little bit for whoever's gonna take Mr. Miller's place, 'cause it's just, it's just a lot of work. It's a lot of work on a band member. So, I don't know.
I just wanted to ask.
Name, name I just wanted to.
My name is Michelle Davis, 17067 Hilton Street in Southfield, Michigan. I'm the treasurer of the marching band. And there are a lot of financial obligations that we have to do upfront. And one of them is, we secure, our kids go to band camp every year in August. And we, we're being pressured. We, they go to the Katniss Center in Hudson, Michigan. And they wanna know right now if we're going to come. They've reserved the date for us. There's some money that we have to put down. And then, once we put that money down, we're, you know, we're glued to our commitment. And so we really need to know some. We need to know if we're gonna have a marching band.
We definitely.
But if we, if we have a marching band, we know that with the current people in place right now, we know that we go to band camp at Hudson, Michigan. So we don't know if that's gonna change, but we need to make a decision because all of the band camps are full now. And so we've got a date set, a side for us. And so we just really need to know so we can move forward.
We are the money people. So we just, you know, the parents are really the head of the game. And even though that, you know, I haven't seen her, she hasn't seen her, she has another daughter that's a junior, you know, but we just wanna make sure that the band stays the same, you know, continuously as number one. So that's why we're here today.
Thank you. Well, I can state unequivocally that this board is well-versed in marching band issues. We've been doing that. And I'm glad that my colleagues, you know, held back because we do have some later band folks who are sitting here on this board. So I know about the rivalry. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Turner to address your concerns, if you could.
First and foremost, Mr. Miller has not communicated his retirement to the district. That's first. So I say, then, can he change his mind and decide to do something different? He has not communicated his retirement. So hypothetically, if Mr. Miller does decide to retire, working with Dr. Wood, we will ensure that the music curriculum continues in the district. And we do that in a very effective way.
That's good to know. Thank you.
As you can see, her son is so well-versed, Clarinet, right?
No, he plays the violoncello.
Violoncello, okay.
Plays violoncello, and then he's a basketball player. And he goes to the UA. So, what can I say?
Yeah.
And I'm like a rooster, my daughter's head, I'm like...
That's good, thank you.
As you can see, her, her son is so well versed, Clarinet, right?
No, he, he plays the baritone.
Baritone, okay.
Plays baritone, and then he's a basketball player. And he goes to the UA, so, what can I say? And I'm like a little my daughter's pageant woman.
Okay.
My son's a section lead for baritone.
And he taught, and he taught that basketball, football parents are bad.
We all got to turn, my, my kids are in kindergarten.
Okay, thank you all, Ms. Turner.
Thank you, all the hard work that you're doing, band leader. I am personally very familiar with how much work it entails. It's a lot.
Oh, yes.
And so thank you, we know you do it for your children, but you're really doing this for the whole district. So thank you for supporting a wonderful band.
Thank you.
Okay, doesn't look like we have any more green cards, which is a good thing. We now come to board matters, where the board is, shares information with the community, and at this time, any of, Mr. Booth, do you have anything to add?
I'd just like to say happy new year to the city of Southfield, Lakeville Village, and Southfield Township. Also, I'd like to congratulate our officers that was elected. We have Yolanda Smith, that was re-elected secretary, congratulations. Betty Robinson, she was elected as our treasurer, congratulations. Congratulations to the president of the school board, Dr. Cannon, and the vice president, Lance Williams, and I'm just grateful to be among such good and intelligent board members, and I just want us to bond together to help uplift the community, and the students, the entire city of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Katz?
Yes, I would like to talk to you about the political situation, I don't want to bore you to that, but we are under siege as a school board, and as a school district, as is the state and the country, so it's a problem at state level and on the national level. On the state level, I congratulate Mr. Cannon for bringing in Mr. Richard McClellan to the district. He came in to look over our schools. Mr. McClellan is an attorney, who has the ear of Governor Snyder, who was, who is a founder of the Manhattan Center, and he was also the author of the voucher proposal that was completed soundly in the state of Michigan a few years ago. I don't know if you remember, but it went down two to one. And he also was working with the Education Achievement Authority, which would be, if it's followed through, a statewide district, that originally would have been able to take schools that were empty from any district without, with minimal payments, or take our students, and what happened when Mr. McClellan came to Southfield was he saw the quality of education we are providing here for our students, and he respected it, and he immediately wrote a letter to the governor saying they should rethink some of the things they were doing. Consequently, with the bills for the Education Achievement Authority came up, the governor did not sign it, which means in effect they were vetoed, and they are in the process of being rewritten under more favorable conditions. So the, the way it's being rewritten will be in three parts. The first part changed the school population for the Education Achievement Authority, which I will refer to as EAA, to, so that you could only, the district, the statewide district could only select the lowest five percent in the achievement records of schools, the lowest performing schools, only five percent. That was the major change. The second part, which, by the way, this will probably come out in January, the end of January, January twenty-seventh. The part two would create new kinds of schools, which we already have, but they would, it would create cyber, more cyber and charter schools in the state of Michigan, which is worrisome, because every charter or cyber school that opens gets its funding from the school aid fund, and reduces the amount of, the dollars that are available for all of the other, other school districts. So, and the third part would follow Richard McClellan's draft form of the Oxford Review, and it would provide scholarships for early grads, that is, if a student went to high school for two and a half years, that student could get a scholarship to college, but what would the advantage be for the remaining students, who might be verified students, and taking close schedules for three or four years, and they would not be eligible for these scholarships, so that's a little troublesome. And it would also, this is House Bill fifty-nine twenty-three, which is being paired with the third part, it would also create schools able to pick and choose their students, so that the schools, the statewide schools would be able to pick students in parting to gender, or grades, or whatever talent, and that is worrisome too, because it would create segregation on many levels, it could conceivably create that kind of segregation. So we're hoping that, that the governor rethinks these parts of the EAA, and I would like to report that members of this board, at least one member, will attend the FRN meeting, which is a function of the National Association of School Boards. FRN stands for Federal Relations Committee, which will meet in Washington, and its primary purpose is to lobby our representatives in Washington for better funding for public education, and against sequestration, which I know you've heard of, so I don't want to bore you. Sequestration is an automatic, across-the-board cancellation of budget resources, and they recently reduced that from eight point two percent to five point nine percent. A reduction of five point nine percent would mean at least sixty thousand dollars per student in this district, I think. I have to add my figures with Debbie Trump, who is our financial chief advisor, but it would be a lot of money, and it would hurt the district. Our district, as well as other districts, as you know, is doing extremely well. Our superintendent is on a short list for best superintendent in the country. It's quite an honor, you know, I'm so proud. My feet don't touch the ground, but we are under siege financially, and the reductions for sequestration will occur in the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, probably around July the first two thousand thirteen, is for special programs that would include, this is federally funded, special ed, Title One, teacher education programs, and other programs that are federally funded. And at this point, the federal government is not living up to its responsibility, it had said it would fund forty percent of the excess that we spend over the school aid fund, and they're only funding at sixteen or seventeen percent, so the difference in funding comes out of the monies that we should be spending on all of our children, and we have special ed students, we have one that's costing us hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We have to provide the services legally for all of our special ed students. Most of the charter schools, you know, Southfield has, half of the charter schools in Oakland County are here in Southfield, and I don't think the parents understand what they're getting into, because our district is the best. I say this unqualifiedly, we are the best, but we are pushed up against the wall financially. So at the federal relations network meetings in Washington, our representative will go with papers that demonstrate how the lack of funding is going to hurt our district seriously, and I expect that Mr. Poole will go, and perhaps Mr. Lewis, and they will be well prepared to represent you, but we need you to call our representatives, local and national, we need you to write letters. If you need a sample letter, and you're willing to put your name to it, we can provide it, really. So I want you to spread the word that this is a serious, serious problem that we have across the country, not just in Southfield. So, and we did pass a resolution at our last board meeting, I don't know if you read it, opposed to funding cuts in public education. So I'm counting on you, if you have any questions, call any one of us, call the school board buildings, if you want the letter, we can provide it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Mrs. Robinson?
Sure. I just have a brief comment to make, to remind parents that this is a good time to start completing applications for scholarships, if you haven't already. I've done several real opportunities this week, especially the Buick Explorer Scholarship, which rewards thousands dollars to students, and at least one student received one hundred thousand dollars. So I'd like to see a student from Southfield Public who received that scholarship. Last holiday, one of the houses at Southfield High sends out a package onto the seniors, and notify them of all the available scholarships, and I would just like to encourage you to help your students fill out the application as quickly as possible, so they can get as much money as they can, and that's my comment.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, because I did apply for that Buick scholarship forever, so.
Good.
Be using that information. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I want to echo what everyone said about Dr. Robinson, of course, we're expecting positive results, and I just want to publicly say how proud I am of her and the district. I want to shout out the school website that I meant to mention last month, but if you haven't noticed already, it's new question, you know, it's a lot more eye-catching than it used to be, so definitely check that out, and then now that we have the parent connect, I'm sorry, the parent link piece, it'll just make it even more of a worthwhile experience. And lastly, I want to say hi to the champion staff that come to each of these meetings that this, we're passing out cookies after, but I just want to thank you for your support, and all the other staff members who have come out tonight.
I'd like to get, say, get all the comments that were made here tonight, I appreciate the vote of confidence from the board here, on the selection of our officers, and we thank our president as well for all of his experience and knowledge that he'll be passing on to us here, and has passed on to us in the past few years. I'd like to thank the community, say happy new year to everyone here in the room, and I appreciate the opportunity, like I said, when I came on board in December of two thousand nine, we would be national, and we are national. We're there, I said that would happen, and we are there. So thanks to everyone that supports our students, as well as the community for supporting Southfield Public students.
I, I do want to kind of comment also on where you were in terms of the visit by Mr. McClellan here in Southfield, that was a rather momentous occasion for us, in that we were able to put in the mind of someone from a very conservative viewpoint, a different view of how public education truly works. I had the opportunity to meet him during the last session of my fellowship program, the Michigan Political Leadership Program, and, you know, I'm, I'm not one of these people that is, you know, just tied to any kind of ideology or anything else, I, I figure we're adults, we're grown men, we should be able to have a conversation, and while we were sitting down over a beer, and, you know, I expressed to him that, you know, you need to come to Southfield so that you can see a public school district that works, and he was very open, and he said, I'll take you on a challenge. He came to Southfield, and honestly, I think we made the man socks roll up and down, by the time he left here, he had a totally different opinion about public education, because the governor, for all of the other things that are going on, he had a very interesting take on education, where he said, we're going to deliver anytime, anyplace, anyspace, and that's, you know, a more comprehensive approach to education, but he's leaving, he's leaving out one key ingredient, and that's anybody, and that's what we do here in Southfield. We educate everybody, we don't get to pick and choose who comes. The young man that we had here earlier, I mean, that, that came just as a total surprise, he was actually a victim of one of those, what do they call them, the roadside bombs?
IEDs.
Yeah, IEDs, he was a victim of an IED in Iraq, and when he came to us, he was in very bad shape, and regardless of the condition, you know, as I say all the time, we meet students where they are, and we get them to where they need to be. We met that young man, you know, in that condition, unable to speak the language, blind, okay, and just totally foreign to all of our ways, and now we're seeing somebody that's set on another course, to now become somebody that's productive in the world. That's what we do here in Southfield, and that's what we showed Richard McClellan. And Richard McClellan, as a result of that, in that letter that he sent to the governor, he has a different idea about how things are done. I want to thank, I want to congratulate every one of us, the educators and dedicated administrators that are here in Southfield, that continue to put us far above all the other districts that surround us. We have excellent leadership from our superintendent, and her administration, and all the way through all the ranks, and it's evident, it is so evident, that we are changing lives here in Southfield. I commend you all for that, I thank you all for that, it's an honor for me to serve as president of this Board of Education, and we're just going from, as the challenge was, we're going to go from good to great, we're making those strides, we're close to great now, so thank you all. Future meetings, this weekend, January eleventh and twelfth is the board retreat, January twenty-second at six o'clock, we have student hearings, and February twelfth at seven o'clock next month is our regular board meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Download.
Okay, with that, this meeting of the Southfield Board of Education now is just...